You ready? Okay. Just to give you guys an explanation really quick for everyone that's in the audience tonight, we have a tax levy hearing first, and then we'll go into the regular meeting. We will be as brief as possible because we value your time and we appreciate all of you attending tonight, but I did want to let you know just so you're not confused like what's going on. Okay, calling to order the levy hearing for Diamond Lake School District 76. Roll call, please. Here. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we now open the floor for public comments on agenda items. Do we have any public comments this evening? If you are joining us virtually, please feel free to type those directly into the chat box and we will read them into the meeting. If you are here in person, feel free to stand up and we can take your public comment. And I'll just give it a second. Okay. There does not appear to be any public comments, so now we will proceed with the levy, and I will turn things over to Mr. Rogers.
All right, thank you. Thank you for everyone showing up for the levy today. That was very kind of you. This is the biggest audience we've ever had. I'm just going to very briefly go over the levy process as part of the district's balloon levy process. If we levy over 5% over the prior year's tax levy, we're required to hold a public hearing. So at the last meeting, which was held November 16th, we went over the tentative tax levy, and there's been no changes since then. So we've, we've received all our estimated revenues expenditures. We've calculated all that in. We believe we've asked the appropriate levy. And as part of the levy process, we're required to post the notice in the newspaper for a public hearing, no more than 14, but no less than seven days from the hearing. So it went in on December 3rd. And tonight, if the levy is adopted, I'll be filing it tomorrow with the county clerk's office. So just a reminder, the district is held to do the Property Tax Limitation Act, CPI plus any new property. So CPI for this year was 1.4%. And the tax rate plus the equalized assessed values, how the district collects its property tax revenue. CPI has been very fluctuating over the last couple of years. The 1.4 has been a little on the lower end over the last five years. This year, we're expecting around 5% CPI. So on January 12th, we'll know the exact CPI you for December, and that will be used to collect our revenue for the 2022 year. So we're going to see drastic changes. It's going to be the highest in at least 20 years that we've seen. So as equalized assessed value in the district rises, it's generally an inverse relationship where individuals' tax rates will drop in the district. So rising property values help everyone out in terms of tax rate. As a reminder, the district's primary source of revenue, 75% is devoted to property taxes. And so this is the most important slide, just really dictates what we are going to be asking for tonight, and that's in the blue portion. So that is part of the balloon levy process. We're asking for more money than we reasonably expect to receive, which helps us capture all revenue in the, that's possible for the district. So the yellow portion is what we, our best guess levy that we expect to receive. So that's what I'm basing all of our future projections on. The blue portion is what we'll be requesting from this state, sorry, from the county. And what we do is we'll get a worksheet back that we can kind of divvy up among the funds just to make sure we match my best guess projections. This is mostly for the public, but I always include some frequently asked questions on how your tax bill might be affected by the district's tax levy. So I won't go through all this, but it is attached to the district's website. You can kind of see why my property tax bill might rise more than the 1.4% CPI that we're asking, and it all depends to do with your home values in relation to your neighbors, but also how the district's tax rate compares to our neighboring district. So as with everything, the areas that have more commercial property and more, more valuation in the area, they generally have a lower tax rate, which is, you'll see that with, you know, Kildare, Hawthorne, areas like that. But the district is excellent stewards of our dollars, and we always budget appropriately and ask for only the amount of money that we're expected to use during a fiscal year. Are there any questions? So once the special meeting ends, once we convene to the regular meeting, we'll vote on the tax levy, and I'll just be, there'll be a lot of papers to sign today. I need signatures from pretty much everybody and a bunch of documents, so I appreciate it.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Rogers. Okay, we now open the floor to public comments and petitions on non-agenda items. Do we have any public comments or petitions on non-agenda items this evening? Okay, it does not look like we do, so I will ask for a motion to adjourn from the tax levy meeting. Yes. Okay, moving into the next meeting, calling to order the combined meeting for Diamond Lake School District 76. Roll call, please. Sure. Here. Okay, we now open the floor to public comments on agenda items for the combined meeting this evening. Do we have any public comments? Public comments? Okay, then we will move on to presentations, and we have two fantastic presentations tonight.
So good evening, Board of Education members, the district leadership team, and distinguished family and friends of District 76. I was so moved and touched by the emails I read and the phone call that I received last Thursday morning from a colleague and a friend, and also a parent of an Apptekisik Junior High School student about how amazing our boys' basketball team was at the December 8th game. Board members, as well as the district leadership team and public, you have access to all the emails that we received in our board packets. It's exactly how we hope our students would behave, especially when no one is looking. The good news is, a lot of people were looking, and the boys' kind, selfless, and caring actions were witnessed by so many that were in the stands that evening. The West Oak Middle School Boys Basketball Team, along with their coach, Mr. Steve Nolte, are here tonight to be recognized and celebrated for demonstrating excellence in character, sportsmanship, and teamwork. Their exemplary actions and leadership are examples for all of us to follow. At this time, I would like to read a letter from Dr. Heather Frizzelli, Superintendent of Fox Lake School, and also Apptekisik Junior High School parent. Dear Dr. Sharmel Lewis and District 76 Board of Education members, as a parent and an educator, I am compelled to write to celebrate the grit and grace of your seventh grade boys' basketball team. My son plays on the seventh grade team for Apptekisik Junior High School, and I've had the privilege of seeing both games where our team has played yours and have been impressed at both outings. In the first game this season, the boys showed grit through the game, playing incredibly hard with true tenacity regardless of the score. I complimented the coach specifically because truly the boys played so hard. In the second game, which took place last week, the boys demonstrated, demonstrated the same grit, but added to it a grace that is rarely seeing, seen among adults, let alone 12 and 13-year-olds. Our team manager got up to suit up and play in his game, something he has aspired to do all season. Our boys were certainly excited about this, and the bleachers were packed with his friends and family. When he came in, we knew our boys would get him the ball and make sure he had the opportunities to shine. What we did not expect was the grace your boys showed and likewise make his magical event for our player, make this a magical event for our player. They clearly knew something was up and backed off, so he had plenty of opportunities to shoot. They also never put pressure on him to steal the ball, which they could have easily done, given their tenacity. Our player even scored a basket. By the end of the fourth quarter, it was very clear that by the whole crowd, regardless of the team that you supported, was touched by what happened, as evidenced by the cheering from everyone for our student. I venture to guess that this will be a memory that lasts for our students and his families forever, excuse me, our student and his family forever. Additionally, I believe no one in that gym will ever forget the spirit and sportsmanship that we're all felt. Your students made this happen, and I'm so glad they are being celebrated tonight. I know you pride yourself on creating diamonds, and I certainly attest to seeing diamonds in action this week. With sincere appreciation, Dr. Heather Frizzelli, Superintendent of Schools. And now I'd like to introduce Mr. Peter Cunningham, Principal of West Oak Middle School, to say a few words.
Thank you, Dr. Sharmel Lewis. I say this in all sincerity and I mean this in a very good way, that the actions by our boys do not surprise any of us because we have seen from their time in Diamond Lake all the way through, and it's a reflection of their parents' values, the communities, and the teachers, that these young men act, are men of kindness and understand the importance of service to others and sportsmanship. I received a number of emails, really the next day, from a number of parents that were very touched by what our boys had done, and I don't even know if our boys realized it. They were just doing what they felt was right. I actually, in the process of sharing the story this evening at the PTO, learned that there was another, that many of these boys were on that team, that at the soccer team did something very similar early in the season. I didn't even know about it, where they saw a parent in need outside and ended up helping them carry tons of items, and they just do this. There's a, there's a book that Dr. Sharmel Lewis asked us all to read. My first year was hired, and there's a quote in there that I had to put on my wall, well, actually, Dr. Sharmel Lewis sparkled it and put it on my wall, that says that academic achievement means nothing if our students do not become caring, more loving people. And while our students are high achieving, we're proud of them, and they grow, they are caring and loving people, and that is the highest compliment we can give our students. So we applaud them, and I'm going to welcome actually Steve Nolte at this time to recognize some of them individually because he's the coach. So come on, Coach.
Hi there. I'm Steve Nolte. I'm the coach for a seventh grade basketball team. I was thinking about this week, this is my, I've coached high school, coached middle school. This is my 26th season coaching. And out of the 26 seasons, I've seen a lot of good acts of kindness, but nothing like this. And I give these kids a ton of credit because all season long, what I try to preach to them, instill to them, it's the same stuff that our teachers try to do every day. And that's that we work hard. We're gritty, we fight no matter the situation we're in. Oftentimes, we have kids that are battling through adversity daily. And these kids, they fight day and day and day in our games. Sometimes they're kind of lopsided, but we always battle. We battle every minute of every game. And it was really cool and really special during this game, even though as we're fighting and battling every second during that, that they were able to step back and they were able to realize the situation. And that's the second thing that I think we all try to instill them here at Diamond Lake, is that we want them to be good people and care about others around them and their community. And sometimes that means giving up something for yourself, for those around you. So I definitely give kudos to those guys. We finished up our season last night, unfortunately, losing to Apptekisik. And, and also our other game against Woodland, but they fought hard all season long. I'm proud of these guys. We should be proud of them as a school, as a community. Parents should be proud of them, their teachers would be proud of them. I'm proud of all of you boys. We have a good amount of them here tonight. I would like to call each of them up if I can. Okay. So I'm kind of, I'm just seeing who's here and saying some names. So I have Jerry Ortega. Come on, come on down as I say your name, guys. Kevin Jimenez. Kevin Jimenez. Esteban Gonzalez. Lucas Brophy. Brendan Cardona. Tommy Scheifli. I have back there, who do I got? Oh, I got James Crenshaw. I have Celso Cabrera, who's our team manager. Sebastian Cabrera, and our big, our big man who is always fighting hard for us, Gautam Suresh. I didn't forget anybody, did I? Awesome. Hey, guys, great job this season, great job working hard. I know you guys are continuing to work hard in the classroom and in any other athletics that you guys are a part of. You know I'm always here to help you for anything that you need, but congratulations. I think this is a great opportunity for you guys to be recognized in front of the Board of Education here tonight. So have a great basketball team.
We are so proud of you guys. Thank you so much for shining on like bright diamonds and demonstrating such true character, sportsmanship, teamwork, and leadership on behalf of District 76. And Mr. Nolte, thank you for leading such a great team. All right, and thank you, parents, for coming. Mr. Hanson's going to take a quick. I think that was our first ever standing ovation, but it was very well deserved. So I think that was awesome. One more round of applause, how about that, as they walk out? And to keep the celebrations going, we are going to finish off our presentations tonight with our Diamond Award winner, and I'm going to ask Mrs. Carmichael to come up and share who and why she nominated for a Diamond Award this month. This is Carmichael.
Hi, I'm Mrs. Carmichael, and Toni, I saw, as team leader, I wanted to give a Diamond Award. I'm going to try and be like, not emotional, but it's too late. Aaron Grubb is going to earn this Diamond Award, and I just want to say that, as I've been here, I have been so supported by Dr. Sharmel Lewis. I have been supported by the Board of Education, and I've been supported by our administration. And as a first-year teacher, I just want to tell you that Aaron Grubb has been a shining light, and everything that exhibits the Diamond Award is, is shined on by Aaron. Aaron has taken an eighth-grade curriculum that has been taught by a veteran teacher, and she has completely changed it for the better and is rising to the expectations that we require of our eighth-grade team. So I am so thankful for her. She makes an immediate impact on all of our students. She made an immediate impact with our team. I am so thankful that you have been hired by the district to be on our team. We're so blessed to have you, and I'm thanking you, and I wanted to give you this Diamond Award because you are a shining light, and I think you're going to be an amazing teacher as you gain more strategies, and I'm going to be here to support you as long as I can from here and beyond. And I just wanted to thank you so much, Aaron.
And that concludes our presentations for this evening. Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you, Mr. Nolte, too. So it was nice to end our last meeting of the year on such like a positive, or to start it on such a positive note. And now we will move on to the exciting part of the meeting, that is the business agenda. First up on the business agenda for this evening is the omnibus vote agenda. Items under the omnibus vote agenda are considered routine and or non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. If anyone, board member, staff, administrator, or citizen wishes to have a separate vote on any item or items, that item or items will be pulled from the omnibus vote agenda and voted on separately. Be it resolved that the Diamond Lake 76 Board of Education accepts and approves the omnibus vote agenda items A through E as listed. May I have a motion to approve, please? Yes. Okay, that motion carries. Now we will move on to adopting the tax levy. So may I have a motion to approve the adoption of the Truth in Taxation Resolution, the 2021 tax levy in the following amounts, for which the total is $15,449,073. The education fund, $11,700,000. The ONM fund, $1,500,000. The transportation fund, $750,000. The working cash fund, $85,000. The IMRF fund, $300,000. The social security fund, $300,000. The fire prevention and safety fund, $1,500. The tort immunity fund, $45,000. The special education fund, $750,000. And the CDAL IMRF fund, which is $17,573. The resolution for the working cash, oh no, we went through all this. Okay. And so may I have a motion to approve? Yes. Okay. And that motion carries as well. Be it resolved that the Diamond Lake 76 Board of Education accepts and approves the amended 2021-2022 Board of Education meeting calendar to reflect the following. The January 2022 meeting date is changed from January 11th, 2022, to January 18th, 2022, to accommodate the approval of the district bill schedule. And the June 2022 meeting dates are amended to one meeting on June 21st, 2022. The June 7th meeting, 2022, has been canceled. May I have a motion to approve, please? Yes. Okay. Moving on, be it resolved the Diamond Lake School District 76 Board of Education accepts and approves the 2022-2023 school calendar as presented by the district leadership team. May I have a motion to approve, please? Yes. That motion is approved. Moving on to personnel. Be it resolved the Diamond Lake 76 Board of Education accepts and approves the personnel items as depicted on the agenda. We have five new hires, one leave of absence, two resignations, and one retirement. May I have a motion to approve, please? Yes. Okay, and then the final personnel item, be it resolved the Diamond Lake 76 Board of Education accepts and approves the resignation agreement with Terrelinga as presented. May I have a motion to approve, please? Yes. Okay, that motion carries as well. And the following, the final item on our business agenda this evening is the first reading of the press policies for Press 108. We will be voting on these at our January meeting. Does anyone have any items they would like to discuss this evening or any questions? We can also have discussion before we vote on them in January. Okay. Then that concludes our business agenda for this evening. Moving on to board discussion. Do you have any items for board discussion? Okay. Oh, actually, I do. One thing I wanted to bring up for board discussion was from the Triple I Conference. Mrs. Bayless and I attended a session on DEI, and during that session, it was very interesting to hear kind of the training that was offered by ISB for boards to learn more about diversity, equity, and inclusion. And I thought that might be something our board would want to pursue or look into pursuing for the next, you know, starting sometime in January. So I just wanted to see if we had interest in that, and I could reach out to them to see if we could set up some kind of training. The presentation that they did was a high school district that has three different high schools that were, you know, relatively different, and they were talking about the different strategies they employed at each building, and they really talked about, a lot about making sure that with all the decisions their board was making, that, you know, equity and inclusion were really at the forefront. And I thought that that was, you know, it really resonated with me. I thought that that was something very important, and that is something I think everyone can always learn more about and try to do better at. And so I just thought I would bring that to the board, and if it looks like everyone is interested, then we can pursue that next year, next calendar year. Okay. And we had no Freedom of Information requests. Under notices and communications, we have, as usual, the board meeting calendar, and we also have a governing board summary from CDAL. John, did you attend that last CDAL meeting? I didn't know if there's anything you wanted to add.
No, I did, I did. I don't think there's, there's too much to report. The first focus was on new agreements with the, with the teachers' union and with the union representing the other staff members, somewhat similar to what we've done here relative to how we would address folks who would need to take off time due to COVID.
Okay.
And there were, there were some other presentations as well, but it's all in.
Summary, okay. Great, thank you. Then we will move on to public comments and petitions on non-agenda items. As we have lost our audience, we will look online to see if we have any public comments. And again, those could be typed into the chat box if we have them this evening. I'm not seeing any. No. Okay. Then we will move on to others, and I'm going to call on Mr. Hartman again to talk. The Stevenson High School District reached out to all of the feeder schools about an energy commission for Vernon Township, and Mr. Hartman was kind enough to attend that meeting last week. And I just was going to give you an opportunity to, to kind of catch us up.
Sure. It was interesting. Like you said, Stevenson put it together, but the reason they put it together is that Vernon Township has come out to establish an energy resiliency commission. And essentially, it's about, the idea is that if different governmental and And essentially, it's about, the idea is that if different governmental and groups get together and we all work on it together, there would be a better chance of us getting federal funding for energy initiatives and energy saving and green initiatives, particularly with the Build Back Better monies coming down. And really, what they're trying to put together is what they call the voluntary, non-binding co-op group. And the first step would be to have some group come in and conduct an energy audit. And the participants in this commission would be not only the school districts that touch Vernon Township. It wouldn't necessarily, it wouldn't even be limited, though, to school districts. For example, anything that we would do could be expanded across our district. It wouldn't be limited just within the borders of Vernon Township. They're just trying to create a very loose barrier, but sort of anybody who's affiliated in any way could join in, including, for example, Mundeline Mundeline High School if they wanted to and such. And so, it's made up of not just the school districts, but the towns, so Vernon Hills and Buffalo Grove and Lincolnshire and Long Grove to start. And the idea is that a group would come in to conduct an energy audit and to see what opportunities there would be to improve sort of our energy efficiency and the work that we're doing and the type of stuff that could be covered through grants. And they were talking about a consulting company named Veragey, which in conjunction with the University of Illinois could come in and perform such an audit. It doesn't have to be them. It can be another organization that conducts the audit. What Veragey had offered was to conduct this energy audit at any of the groups that wanted it. And all the costs for this initial audit would be covered by Vernon Township. And then from there, they would provide their findings. And ostensibly, there should be opportunities everywhere for people to take advantage of take advantage of energy efficiencies. An example is that if you want to put on solar panels, there's a significant upfront investment in infrastructure. So, is that the type of thing that could be covered by a government grant? Doesn't have to be solar panels, it could be anything, that's just an example. And interestingly, this group, Veragey, would also would also help write the grants at no charge. At least, that's the way it seems like on the surface. Any decision that we, any decisions would be made on, you know, by each school district and each governmental body. And the hope is that there would be efficiencies in purchasing and in obtaining grants if everybody worked together. So, the idea is that it would be cost-neutral in the short term and there would be savings over the long term. But it's all about reducing carbon footprint, reducing energy costs. So, that was the first meeting, just really to introduce the topic. There was a follow-up meeting on Sunday that I did not attend. That Steve Frost, who's going to be the, he's the president of the Stevenson School District Board of Education. And he's representing the school districts on this commission. And there was a meeting on Sunday evening with, I guess, the entire commission to introduce them to the concept. And it sounds like there's going to be a follow-up meeting later on this week.
Yes.
That would involve the school districts again. So, that's really everything that happened last week.
Great, thank you, thank you for that. There's a follow-up meeting on Thursday and Mr. Rogers is going to attend on behalf of the district. Essentially, they're just talking, they're going to be talking about using Veragey and whether or not people want to proceed. It sounds like that many of the districts already have kind of partners that would be similar to Veragey and I think they're going to try to hash that out and then meet with Veragey just to hear from them. So, Mr. Rogers said he will keep us informed going forward. It sounds like this is a very positive thing. And so, thank you, Mr. Hartman, for attending that and, you know, I think we look forward to hearing more information. Does anyone have any questions or any others this evening? No. Okay, then before we adjourn to executive session, I just wanted to thank everyone for the first kind of half of the school year, for all of your contributions, they are greatly appreciated. We hope that you have a relaxing vacation, you have a very happy and healthy new year and get to enjoy some time with your families. And with that, I would like a motion to adjourn to executive session for the appointment, employment compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the district or legal counsel for the district, including hearing testimony at a complaint lodged against an employee or against legal counsel for the district to determine its validity. We have a motion to adjourn, please. Yes.